Please.
I got it now. We're good?
We're good, sorry.
So it's six, do you think we should start?
Well, game on.
Alright. Call the meeting to order those in character, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in prayer?
I will, thank you. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. And Lord, I just pray, God, that you would guide and direct us tonight in all that we do and say. And I just, Lord, pray for the leadership of this country. Lord, I pray, God, that you provide guidance and direction and cause the division to stop. I just pray that you be with us tonight, guide and direct in all we do and all we say in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, my goodness, we have a full room tonight. I was just telling David, we may need a bigger city council chamber.
We definitely need a better air conditioner.
So I was not here last time. For those of you that were, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate our new council members. I am sorry that I was not able to be here for that. For those of you that were anxiously waiting to know the results of my son's football game that I missed council for, it was a zero-zero tie at the end of regulation, Republic against Web City 7th grade. So this is very big time now, guys. My son played very well, both teams played very well. Every parent on both sides breathed a huge sigh of relief as everybody left zero to zero because it was that tight of a game. So just to give you a catch-up on where I'm at, because I'm sure you were interested, but I know that everybody's here to listen to the things that are close to their heart. And I appreciate you being here and I appreciate the civility that we're all gonna have tonight about some difficult things that we have on our agenda. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for citizen participation. What citizen participation is for is for anyone wanting to speak about something not on the agenda. So something that is not on the agenda, you can approach the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak about anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda. Just because you ask questions does not mean that I will immediately have answers. Sometimes we have to look into things, so feel free. Anybody wishing to speak? It's just me wanting to speak tonight, is that it? Alright. While I make close citizen participation, we're gonna move on to other business, specifically item number one on our agenda. This is 23-R-56, a resolution of the city council excusing absences of council member Poole. Mr. Cameron, I believe this is your matter on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as this council will recall, other discussion over the last several meetings, welcome, was in regards to attendance at the city council meetings as we've had historically per the charter. If you have absences of a council member that exceed three, per the charter, it says that the office is forfeited unless those absences are excused. And so what we have before you tonight is a resolution that is, I want to be very clear about what this is. And I want to be very clear with you, Mrs. Poole, what this is. This is not necessarily a resolution, as you use the term "fire you," that's not what this is for. And for those in the audience that don't understand, and even for those viewing and even for the council members that would be relatively new, I don't want to talk down to you, but I just want you to understand, our charter is the constitution of the city. So that charter is established by the voters of the people. So they establish, you, the people, establish how we're to govern, and so that is our constitution. Inside that charter, it reads that should someone miss three consecutive meetings, that they will be a forfeiture of their office for that capacity, unless this elected body chooses to excuse those absences. In this situation, we have done this process before. Mrs. Poole, as you well know, she's had a very storied career with this community and served in this capacity for quite some time. But at the same time, that is the way the charter reads. So the people have voted, that's what they state. We at this governing body, or not even in my own capacity, I don't have the authority to deviate from the charter if the people voted on it. It's kind of like a sales tax ballot. If I say that it has to be used for parks, I can't deviate because that's the will of the voter. So the charter is the constitution that you, only the citizens can change and only the citizens. So this elected body can't change. The provision it states is if you miss three meetings, that they cannot take that action. So what you have before you tonight is not a resolution that suggests the council or the staff or the mayor are out to get you.
I think you are.
I'm sorry. The way the charter reads is that way. So basically, what is before the council tonight is a resolution that either excuses those absences or does not excuse those absences. And so that is the question that is before the council tonight for consideration. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll take any questions.
Do we have council, questions from council on this issue? Ms. Poole, you're welcome to ask any questions you want.
Is your microphone on?
Do you have any questions, Ms. Poole?
Well, I want to know if I can stay on council.
I understand that, Ms. Poole. So David just went through that about, this isn't about us wanting to kick you off, council. This is about whether or not this council's going to excuse your absences. And if the council excuses your absences, just like they did in 2022.
I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
But I would appreciate them excusing my absence because I've been in the hospital.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I can't help it if I have to go to the hospital.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Has there, Mr.?
And I've been faithful to this since 1984.
Yes, ma'am, you have. Mr. Cameron, has there been a documentation of how many council meetings Ms. Poole has missed?
Yes, because, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So yes, there is, because that's something that, when you're considering this, and per the charter, you have to take consideration. And I do not recall right off the top of my head, but I believe it, is it, is over 50% of the meetings since January? So over 50% of those meetings have been, have been missed.
And she has missed three consecutive scheduled meetings in a row?
Yes, I mean, per the attendance, it would actually be closer to five. But again, we took consideration for the special call meetings. We also had to call a special call meeting because we did not have the quorum. And yes, technically, it requires three, but yes, she's met the threshold for three. And it does, per the charter, it requires this body to act, to excuse those absences. So this body does not get an option of whether or not to vote or to consider this option per the charter.
So if the council members vote in favor of this resolution, they would be voting in favor of excusing the absences and allowing Ms. Poole to continue on?
Just to confirm with council, I believe that is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yes, yes, then the answer would be, and a no vote would be not to excuse the absences. Okay.
Is there questions or discussion from other council members?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Franklin.
And Ms. Poole, very much I appreciate your service and I respect you very deeply for what you've done to Republic, absolutely. The thing that I've struggled with on this one just a little bit, I didn't have a problem with the last time we excused your absences, because I understand you're sick and I understand those types of things happen. My biggest concern is getting in the situations where we have a non-quorum. It really puts the rest of council in a bad position, because when we agree upon a schedule and then we can't keep that schedule because of a non-quorum, in my opinion, it puts us at risk a little bit more exposed to not being able to make that recalled meeting for the second time. And so when I'm looking at the positions that we've been put in over this last year, I know between our non-quorums and having difficulties with number of council members, of course, I encourage all council members to be here every time if possible. This second excusal, I'm really struggling with it just because of the fact that, you know, we've been approached by people that want a voice on council. I really struggle with directing them to a different council member that's not in their ward when they come to me asking specifically for that ward. And just in not having the representation for that ward and having an imbalance of power on the city council. And so that's just something I struggle with a little bit. I don't want to ask you personal questions on your health. Being in the hospital, I understand that a lot of times there's nothing you can do. It just seems like we've kind of gotten to an extended period of time where our council doesn't seem as secure as it once was. And I'm not saying that's your fault, I'm just saying from a broad standpoint, some of the difficulties that we've had this year, even for myself, have caused me difficulties in the rescheduling of the meetings. It's very difficult to look forward to know exactly when I can be available. And when I commit to what we've agreed upon, I have to lean on that just a little bit. And so it's nothing personal on you at all. It's just looking at it, I have to look at it from the aspect of our city and our citizens and the security of our council. But this is more of a statement, I didn't really have any questions, but I just wanted to voice my feelings and what I've come to a conclusion on the matter.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Do you have anything else you would like to say, ma'am? Is there anyone willing to make a motion on, a motion or a second, to take up resolution 23-R-56, a resolution of the city council excusing the absences of council member Poole?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the absences of Ms. Poole.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, was it excuse or approve?
Excuse.
I heard approve.
Totally my fault.
Yeah.
23-R-56, a resolution of the city council excusing absences of council member Poole. Is there anyone here wishing to make a motion to excuse the absences of council member Poole? There is not a motion, so the absences have not been excused. Ms. Poole?
Ma'am, I remember you from the very first meeting that I went to six years ago, sitting in the council chambers, watching the chamber meeting. And I remember you coming up to me and telling me who you were, because, ma'am, you are a force. But ma'am, last year I looked at you and I said, well, you promised to be here, and you did, and you just haven't been. And we need people up here voting, because the business of the city can't go forward without the citizens being represented. So ma'am, based on the charter and your unexcused absences, you forfeited your seat. I'm sorry. You forfeited your seat, ma'am. I would very much like to honor what you've done for this city. And I would like to invite you to come back next week as a citizen, or next meeting as a citizen. Ma'am, you've earned it. You have. And no one in this room wants this conversation. No one does. I'm sorry.
That's the way you feel, I guess that's the way it'll be.
Can we help you down out of your seat? We can help you.
I can't stay for this meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm really disappointed.
I am too. Can I get this for you, ma'am?
That looks quite good. I'm disappointed.
I can understand.
Folks, that's about the worst thing I've ever had to do. That's, $400 a month is not worth doing that. I'm sorry, folks, that was not anything anybody wanted to do. And I apologize for those of you that were not here for that. And I'm gonna move on about the business. There's just no good segue for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
So I would echo the mayor's comments on the subject. And the reason why we have to choose to do that at the beginning versus, versus the very end is because the matters that are on this agenda tonight require a vote. If someone is outside the charter, it could be questioned whether that vote actually counts. So if you have an agenda item tonight and that vote was to go against you or in favor for you, it could be contested. So therefore, we had to take up the action of the charter first. It was not in any way to try to make it a, God knows, we'd have preferred to try to talk about this at the end of the agenda. But I just want to clarify again, because we're talking about the way our charter or our constitution functions, because that is a casting vote. Should it be, we've got rezoning issues tonight, discussions, should that vote go the opposite direction based upon that vote? It could sway the vote, and so therefore, it would be challenged or could be potentially legally challenged. And so just wanted to clarify that position, just a little bit of order as to why, so.
And if any citizens want to talk to me about this afterwards, I'm gonna be here. And I'll talk to anybody and tell you all, everything you want to know. Alright. Thank you. Let's just roll, folks, let's get this done. Consent agenda. Moving on to consent agenda, I welcome the council members to ask any questions about items number two or three on the agenda. And if there are no questions, oh, Chris, I'm gonna kill you.
No doubt.
I apologize, duty called.
I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, Chris, did you vote aye on that?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, seven to zero. Boards, commissions, and committees' schedules, we have a board of adjustments meeting that, on October 5th, that has been canceled. The next city council meetings are October 17th and November 7th. We have a board of adjustments meeting on November 2nd and a city council budget workshop, November 2nd, 2023. Moving on to old business and tabled items, this is item number four on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-30 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 10.44 acres located at 688 South Kansas Avenue from agricultural AG and medium-density single-family R1M to two-family residential R2.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, I understand that there has been a protest petition filed on this particular issue. Council, a protest petition means that it has to be, what kind of vote?
It has to, there has to be six of them, well, how many do we have?
There are seven.
Six.
So six to pass, is that correct? Alright, just wanted to know the rules of the game before I went forward. Staff presented on this issue last time, and I watched YouTube and I understand there was a lot of feeling in this room about that, and I appreciate everybody's coming to speak. Any updates from staff, Mr. Taylor?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council about this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Franklin.
Did have a question, and I think we may have addressed this last time, I shouldn't have to go back and check. Planning and zoning, I believe the vote was four to two. Was that a pass from planning and zoning, or are they under the same majority?
That's a pass.
It is a pass, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Franklin?
I don't have any other questions. If any other council has questions, I kind of have more of a statement than a question.
You are allowed to have discussion.
Lot of information, definitely two of the most difficult things we've ever had to do up here, one after another. I appreciate all the citizens that came up to speak, appreciate all of the different ways that you made us aware of your perspective. And I realize that this zoning request is definitely not a popular one. I believe that Republic, we have a process, and a process that's clear, consistent, and transparent, and an equal application for the consideration of zoning requests. Looking through everything and all of the information, I do understand the citizens' concerns and the concerns that have been brought forward, but we do have a duty to remain focused on the facts and the process. I'm trusting in the developers, the investors, and the vested parties to make the right decision for their private property. And I trust our city staff, I trust the planning and zoning, and the planning and zoning's approval of this zoning request, as well as our mayor and council, to honor that mutually agreed-upon process. Everyone that I can see has followed that process and the procedures that have been put into place to safeguard our investments within the community. And so just as a statement of support, I came on to supporting the statement of facts that the city staff came to on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other questions or discussion from any other council members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-30, please.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, we will now take a roll call vote on our computers.
The crank is working.
Yeah.
Okay. It just took a second.
The ordinance does not pass by a vote of four to three. Moving on to item, oh, and here are the rules, guys. Can you go back to that?
Yes.
Maybe? There we go. So if you were here to watch this particular vote, I appreciate your being here. You are welcome to leave, we have a lengthy agenda, and it's gonna be a little bit. So I just wanted to let you know the rules of the game. If you were here to watch this and you were done, you're free to leave, you're not gonna hurt anybody's feelings. So just letting you know. Moving on to item number, yeah, I'll wait for you guys, it's fine. I guess, thank you. Alright, moving on to item number five on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-35 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving a special use permit for Melanie Ferguson to operate Republic Animal Hospital on real property located at 542, 546, 550, and 554 East Harrison Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from council, or from staff?
No updates.
Thank you, I didn't see you sitting there, I appreciate, you're hiding behind Chris. Any questions or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-35.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, we will now take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes on a vote of seven to zero. Item number six on our agenda, this is 23-36. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-36 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 15 acres located at 1230 South State Highway MM from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-36, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, we will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes at a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-37 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the annexation of approximately 40.456 acres located at 7217 West Farm Road 182 and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Questions or discussion from council? No questions or discussion, I would now entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-37, please.
Motion. Second.
Laura, did you get that? Very good, we will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-38 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 40 acres of real property located at the intersection of South Farm Road 101 and West Farm Road 170 from Planned Development District PDD to Boyce Mixed Use Planned Development District PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-38.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, we will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-39 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 17.19 acres located at 3020 and 2946 North York Avenue from agricultural AG to Six Point Junction Planned Development District PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, just more of a statement on this one again, I think I've had all my questions answered. I really appreciate the additional information on the outline of the Brookline Village and the map that staff has provided for us on kind of giving us an aerial view of this entire area as a whole. I really appreciate the length that the developer went on this property. And even though this isn't another hot topic in the neighborhood, the steps that I'd seen the developer go to this on adding that additional layer of the berm and the privacy, taking everything, all the citizens in the neighborhood, and addressing people in the neighborhood, I was really impressed just by seeing the length that the developer went on this. And I really appreciate all of the citizens of Brookline that did come out and speak on that. And both sides, there was some really good testament from the citizens, and I really do appreciate all of that from there in the Brookline area. But, and again, on this But, and again, on this one, I guess one question I did have, this was approved by planning and zoning. Was that?
Correct.
It was approved. Okay. Other than that, that's all I had to say. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Oh, dude, this guy wasn't planning on talking about it. So, I went out, this would have been last week, and drove around the neighborhood with Melanie, and then we drove to the side. Melanie, who spoke in front of us so well the last couple of times something like this has come on. And we actually were fortunate because we got to talk to like four or five different homeowners or residents out there. Some of them just sounded like cutting wood, and some of them Melanie had kind of told that somebody from the council was going to be out there. And they were all really lovely. It was really, it really affirmed what I believed would, the emotions and thoughts I would have if I lived in this specific neighborhood and some of these things were happening around me through no fault or choice of my own. It was clear to me, the majority, well, I won't say the majority, literally every person I talked to didn't want this to happen. And because of that, because I believe my role sitting in this seat is to vote for people, not for businesses. I feel like we're representatives of the people of this city, and these people specifically here don't want this. I plan to vote no. And I don't know if I'm, is that a spoiler? Am I allowed to spoil things?
It's discussion, man. You can say whatever you feel like you need to say.
Here's what I will say. Because something's coming for that land, and it's not going to be houses because it can't be houses, because there are restrictions being that close to the tracks from what I understand. Working or having this with a developer who is at least willing to talk to the people in the community and to make this as nice as you can make a development like this. I think, given the choice between him or her, whomever it is, and the next person to come along, this might be the best thing. However, I'm still going to vote no based on what the people that have lived there in that neighborhood for a long time want me to do. But trying to look at it objectively and being able to talk to the people in that neighborhood, I think they understand a yes vote as much as they'd understand a no vote. Those are my impressions from visiting with about four or five different families in that neighborhood, and then corresponding via email with a few more. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Franklin?
And I appreciate, I appreciate, Mr., you're giving us that very much. I do appreciate hearing from counsel as well. I just wanted to clarify for my own, my own purpose that I do my best to leave all of my emotions out of this and to learn the process that we've set for the city of Republic and that all of us as counsel at some point in time have agreed upon. And so, anytime I'm making a decision, it's never personal, it's never based upon the developer or the builder or, you know, when the citizens come here and they give us everything on here, I make sure to look through everything and every concern and satisfied. And until I'm satisfied that the city has addressed that or it's addressed in some way, I'm not in favor of it. But I don't want it to seem like I'm in favor of developers or anything else. I look at it as the facts and our approved processes before I come to my conclusions. That's, I just wanted to clarify for myself.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-39.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of five to two. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda. That's right, right on item 10. Item number 10 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-40 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title IV Land Use Chapter 410 Subdivision Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-40, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number 11. This is 23-41. I would entertain a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-41 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving and adopting standard specifications and details for water and sewer construction to replace the current construction specifications in Stormwater Management and Design Criteria Manual and amending Title V, Chapter 510, Article 510-4, Section 510.120, Construction Specifications and Replacing the Construction Specifications for Public Improvements of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri to reference the specifications adopted herein.
Outstanding work, Laura.
It's a lot of specifications.
That was a lot. Phew. All right. Any updates from the city? You've had time to think about it. So, anything? Very good. Questions or comments or discussion from counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-41, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number 12 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-42 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving and adopting a Stormwater Management and Design Criteria Manual.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city? Very good. Are you sure? I always pick on the new guy. I'm sorry. Ask your buddy sitting right there. I usually pick on him. All right. No updates from the city. Any questions, comments, discussion from counsel on this issue?
Hang on one. How long did you guys work on that? No, no. This is me giving you Florida bragging. Like, how long?
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-42, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, do you feel nervous that we're going to do a roll call vote? Like, I hope we're okay. We'll do a vote on our computers. Green's good. All right. Look at that. You win. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Sorry, man. I gotta do something. Moving on to item number 13 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-43 by title only, please.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title II, Chapter 215, Article 215-4 of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri, by repealing subsection G of section 215.840, Weapons Carrying Concealed Other Unlawful Use.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-43, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance carries by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 14 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-44 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion.
Motion carries six, zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plot of the Iron Grain Plan Development District Phase One.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-44.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of six to zero to one. Phew. All right. Done with the old business, moving on to the new business. This is first reading of ordinances. Item number 15. A public hearing of the city council regarding approving the annexation of approximately .29 acres of property located at 1167 North Oakwood Avenue and adjacent right-of-way. Was I supposed to read that, or were you supposed to read that? I was supposed to read it, then I read it. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this issue about whether or not it should be annexed in? If so, please approach the podium, say your piece, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of the annexation of approximately .29 acres of property located at 1167 North Oakwood Avenue and adjacent right-of-way. Moving on to item number 16 on our agenda. This is 23-45. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-45 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the annexation of approximately .29 acres of property located at 1167 North Oakwood Avenue and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, Chris, I appreciate you because Karen would jump up when the public hearing started, and it would always throw me off. She did that on purpose, and I appreciate you being on my team and not throwing me off. I only knew that because she warned me. All right. Mr. Tabor, you have the floor. So, we have an application and a voluntary petition to annex for the property at 1167 North Oakwood. The property consists of .29 acres, and it is accessible to city water and sewer. Water's on the west side of Oakwood, while sewer is on the east. The property is surrounded by property entirely within the city, making it both contiguous and compact as an annexation for the city. The property is currently under the jurisdiction of Greene County and is zoned agriculture A1. It would come into the city as agricultural AG. The city, or the staff is recommending approval of this application. Thank you, sir. Questions?
That was kind of a general question. I think I know the answer, but can you explain why we have, sometimes you have property that you would assume would be in Republic that's not actually annexed and when things around it already are?
We rarely require people to annex. We do it through a voluntary annexation petition. So, if someone does not want to come in, in most cases, we don't force that unless there's an incredibly good reason. We do get consent to annex whenever anyone outside the city takes on our, our infrastructure, our water, or our sewer, but we rarely, rarely exercise any of that consent. This is just an outlying parcel that I believe the owner actually intended to annex long ago and got back to kind of what their holdings were, and then saw that they hadn't completed that yet. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Mr. Franklin?
General question. Sewer water, would this be a property that's on well and septic currently? I mean, once it's annexed, do they attach to our system, or they already be attached to our system?
I don't believe they are on city water. I would have to investigate to see if they were on city sewer. They have, currently with the proximity of the utilities, they could hypothetically attach at any point. They would pay a higher rate than a resident that's inside the city. However, the reason is just to, for this annexation is just to bring it in the city and then to use it with the larger pieces of property around it, I think.
Okay.
Other questions? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so any questions you have, please give a staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 17 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-46 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title V, Chapter 515, Section 515.010. Applicability, preemption, 515.020, definitions, 515.050, permits required, requirements, 515.090. Right-of-way user responsibilities and requirements, and 515.110, inspections, stop-work orders, appeals, and penalties of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. They gave you the exciting one tonight, did they?
I actually think this stuff is exciting. So, Garrett Brickner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So, what this is, as you guys may have seen over the past couple of years, a lot of fiber companies have been coming in, helping to get more internet options available to the citizens. With that, there's also been some challenges, including instances of damaged sewer lines, impacted gas services, disrupted electric lines, stuff like that. We don't see the fiber providers going away. We actually anticipate more of them coming in to do more fiber installations. So, what we're trying to do is clean up our ordinances a little bit and then implement a new process moving forward so that we will meet with those contractors on a regular basis to, and it's, it's not to come down on them. It's to work with them, to help them as they proceed through town, doing their work, to help keep track of where they're at, who's where, so we don't have four contractors stacked up on top of each other in one area of town, all working at the same time. So, the ordinance changes themselves are minor, just some language changes mostly. The real impact is going to be the process change. We're going to have contractors come in and meet with us on a regular basis and go from there. So, that's really it. I'm here if I, if you guys have any questions. Our utility inspector is also here, Mr. Tim Folks. So, if you guys have any questions.
Questions from counsel? Yes, sir, question.
So, is the intention of this to minimize impacts like what we saw where they were tearing into gas lines and sewer lines?
Ideally, yes. So, one of the things we're going to look at doing is instead of, so when someone calls in a locate for a job, they're calling in the entire job, no matter how large that is. So, one thing we're looking at is getting them to down to, like, okay, what are you actually doing in the next two weeks or so? We'll get that located. We'll be out there with them to help them through that process and hopefully mitigate some of those utility hits.
Great question. Anything else, Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, and I think I read this in here. There is notification to the neighbors in here somewhere that, okay?
Yes. Yep. They're required to do door hangers at the minimum, but try to make contact with those neighbors before they're in their yards doing stuff. It also requires them to get permission before leaving, like, drills or any other equipment on a neighbor's or on someone's property, whether that be their property or proceed. It may be in the right-of-way, but if it's in front of your house, you're going to be like, why is this thing here?
Sure. Sure. No, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Please remember, this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting with any questions. Thank you, Mr. Brickner. Moving on to item number 18 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-47 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 28.88 acres located at the 7200 block of West Farm Road 170 from Kirkwood Estates Planned Development District PDD 22003 to Kirkwood Estates Planned Development District PDD 23005.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, good evening again. The applicant is seeking to make a slight alteration to what is the current existing development plan shown up there for the subject property. This is the site of an existing PDD, which was approved on July 19th of 2022. The existing plan includes 49 lots meeting the standards of medium-density, single-family residential, which is our R1M zoning, and seven lots meeting those of commercial, general commercial C2 zoning. In the new development plan before you,
In the new development plan before you, um, the general design and layout for the infrastructure, roads are all the same. Uh, the only substantial change is one to the actual density of the subdivision. So this, uh, a bit of a reconfiguration to detention and to some of the lots allowed them to actually gain a lot. So the difference between these two is effectively one residential lot. All residential lots still meet the requirements of R-one-M zoning. So specifically, the plan has eleven point seven-two acres, over fifty lots, meeting the standards of medium-density, single-family residential, and ten point two-six acres of, uh, over seven lots that meet the standards of C-two zoning, general commercial. The development plan also still includes a secondary arterial street with eighty feet of right-of-way, um, that will become a portion of Bailey Avenue. And also still required is the construction of a new right-in, right-out for the intersection of the new Bailey with US Highway sixty. Um, all, all of that construction is at the cost of the developer. The development plan meets the adopted plans of the city as well as of the municipal code. And if approved, the next step would be the design and permitting of infrastructure for this project, um, which will go through the review process to ensure that all the specifications and codes and standards are met. Staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Any questions, comments, or discussion from council at this time? Mr. Updike.
Does this kill the south side, uh, trucking parking, or is it going to be just to the west of it or east of it?
It does appear to go through the trucking parking.
Yes, sir.
And that kind of followed under the question I had. Who owns that? I know it used to be a way station, right? Is that what they?
Right. I believe it's a, a defunct way station. Um, so it's on MoDOT right-of-way, so.
If MoDOT wants to tear it out, they can tear it out. It doesn't affect anybody else at that point.
I, I don't know if there are plans to move that or any of that.
But it, it belongs to MoDOT.
I think, uh.
I, I believe we, we have some input from the back.
Some interjection.
Andy's back, folks.
Did you call him Andy?
I didn't.
Oh, Andy's back.
Andy's back. No, Andy's back.
Sorry, go ahead. What do you know?
Not much. Uh, Ian Nelson, Assistant City Administrator, to answer that question, so for a long time, MoDOTs wanted to remove that. It's not a, I wouldn't call it a sanctioned truck parking area by any means, and I probably could get the major to attest that it's almost a nuisance for us as well. So getting it removed, um, and out of the way is kind of a target for both of us, although they haven't really made a plan to invest in removing that from the right-of-way.
It looks sketchy.
Any other questions from council or Mr. Tabor? Did you have anything else?
Nope.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. Talk to major if you want to hear some good stories, it sounds like. Moving on to item number nineteen, and this is twenty-three dash forty-eight, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-three dash forty-eight by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a First Amendment to the developer agreement with Republic R-three School District for the construction of a queuing road for the Republic Schools located at North Main Street and West State Highway one-seventy-four.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brinkner.
Good evening. Um, so the original developer's agreement for the school queuing road, um, had them paying for the asphalt pavement that was going to be put down. Um, that was because that was the part that the city could not do with our own crews and could not, uh, accomplish, uh, that way. So, um, the original estimate was two hundred and ninety-two thousand for that work. It actually came in at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. With that, there was additional unsuitable material discovered, um, while we, while our crews were excavating for the roadway. That is material that you can't build on top of. It'll, it's too squishy. Um, that's the technical term. So that was replaced. Uh, the additional, um, rock and what material that we brought in to build that up was paid for by the city. So what this, it, what this amendment would do is make it to where it's a true fifty-fifty split between the school and the City of Republic. And so the total cost of the project was five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and some change. Uh, each party in this case would be responsible for two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. And if you have an earlier version of the agenda, you have a different number. Um, but that is the actual number that each party would be responsible for.
Questions, comments, or discussion from council?
How'd the queuing road work out? Is everybody happy?
Great. Yeah.
Is it what we had envisioned and parents aren't yelling quite as loud?
Well, I don't know if they're yelling. Um, I don't hear them. So, um, no, it's working great. Uh, we got some good drone footage of it. Everybody can stack inside the queuing road itself. Um, it does not alleviate the problem at Main Street and one-seventy-four, and it, it never was intended to. So, um, that is a project that is, it's on MoDOT's list. It's on our list of things to do. But one-seventy-four is a state highway, so we're going to need MoDOT's participation to help fix that intersection, so.
Very good. Yes, sir.
As a side note, the kids have found that road. There's drag racing going on.
No.
Okay. I believe the school is closing it as often as they can, so, um, but yeah, I can, I can see that.
The report is it's a, uh, brown Chevrolet extended cab with chrome, chrome wheels. It's Gary.
Gary, Major Burks is nodding, so I think he's on it.
Yeah, way to tattle on yourself, Gary.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Has this already been discussed with the school, or will they find out when this is?
No, that's an excellent question. Yes, uh, I've discussed this with Dr. Pierce. Uh, they have verbally agreed to it, but we need to bring it before our city council and they'll need to bring it before their school board, um, for approval. But yes, they have verbally agreed to it.
Nothing else? Please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. Gary, watch yourself. Yeah. Item number twenty on our agenda. This is twenty-three dash forty-nine. For those of you looking, this is our last agenda item. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-three dash forty-nine by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Staying.
Motion carries by a vote of six, zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an amendment to the developer agreement with the Iron Grain District LLC and Majors Republic Number Three-C LLC for the continued development of the Iron Grain District.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brinkner.
Thank you. Um, so as you guys know, uh, Iron Grain, uh, final plat passed tonight. They're ready to move forward with phase two of the development. Um, they're asking us to continue, uh, assisting in the same manner that we did with phase one. So what that is, is us assisting with the install of the water line for phase two, just like we did with phase one. So we will bid the water line itself. Um, they will reimburse us for that, and then we will install it with our crews, uh, moving forward. So this is an amendment to the original developer's agreement, um, to continue working out there.
Excellent. Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin.
Just question on that map right there. Is the bottom section down there, is that phase one?
Yes. Uh, so, yeah.
Okay. I, I can see it now. That was just.
Yeah, sorry. This map is, yeah, it's, uh, north is to that way.
Gotcha.
That way on that map.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting to answer any questions. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the last two meetings have been fairly lengthy. Councilmember Berkey, I commend you for the service. Last time it was a very long meeting, and I do think the mayor did that on purpose.
I did. I agree.
Uh, to take that. Just trying to bring a little levity. Tonight was a, was one of those more difficult nights that you, you remember in your, your career when you have to do work. It's, when you, when you consider the charter and the things that have to be done, it's, it's our responsibility, unfortunately, to, sometimes there's part of those charters, it's very easy to follow. And there's other parts you're like, gosh, I wish I, I, uh, none of us wished that we had to bring those things up. But I, I do want to state, you know, to Mrs. Poole for the work that she has done, I mean, for this community that goes back for a long time. We named the, the Senior Center after her efforts and the work that she's done there. You know, the mayor and I, I, I can assure you that we'll make sure that that is celebrated appropriately. Should she, should she accept the invite for us to, to do that, but I think that there will be an opportunity for us to, um, celebrate her service to this, to this community. Yeah, ma'am, thank you for being here tonight. I'm sure you learned a lot. It's one of those meetings that you can glean from. So we'll be here for, when the meeting's over, if you'd like to ask us any, any questions regarding how we do our, our business at the city council meeting. Uh, Convoy of Hope, I want to congratulate them on Thursday. They will be opening their, uh, global headquarters. There will be a number of us there. I think the invite has gone out, uh, to those that were able to tour the facility, uh, the last, the last week. I want to, uh, extend my appreciation to Convoy of Hope. They're very, they're, they're a very good partner. They've been very good to us. Uh, and they wanted to do this before they did the grand, the dedication, so to allow the staff, the employees, uh, you guys all just voted on a development agreement. We were a development agreement partner on the Convoy of Hope project, uh, which was part of the assistance to help them be in Republic today. But it's going to be a great celebration. There's going to be a number of, uh, elected officials. The governor is going to be there. I think the past governor will be there as well. And, uh, so if, if you can attend, uh, would love to see you there. I know Jordan Valley also opened, uh, did their grand opening today. Unfortunately, in that one, that was a more difficult situation because they had that, that grand opening has been scheduled four or five times and been canceled due to weather. And the one day that they were able to do it, none of us could actually attend it, but Congressman Burleson was in town and also, um, Senator Trent, uh, was able to attend. And I don't know if anybody from the city was able to make it, but I want to congratulate Jordan Valley and their investment. There is a couple of things, just for FYI, the Oakwood property was purchased in two thousand and sixteen. Oakwood, it's at the intersection of Oakwood and was it Farm Road one-seventy-four? City purchased that property for potential city hall. Obviously, the direction of the community is not going in that way. And so this council has authorized us for the sale of that property, or at least to proceed with the sale of that property. You will begin to see signage on the corner of that lot for, as it is for sale. Uh, we will bring that before this council as you, uh, we will continue to partner with the Springfield-Green County Library because that's where part of the funds would go, uh, if we're successful in the sale of that property. And so I want to report that that is, I believe that, when's the bids open? End of October?
We plan to publish it in hopefully the coming days, and then the deadline will be October twenty-seventh.
Very good. So I also want to say, uh, thank you for the, the approval of the queuing la-, or the, the development agreement. This is a, it's actually just an amendment to the work we've already done, but cleaning those documents up to make sure that the, from auditing perspectives, sometimes we could just pay gentleman's agreement. But when you're dealing with paper and you have auditors making sure that's done, I think this is the way that the community and government should function, that it changed, it altered. So what, what used to be a handshake between two administrators could say, hey, listen, this is good, just split it in half. Unfortunately, we have to deal with paper today. And so I appreciate the school district's willingness to work with us because they could have said, sorry, our deal came in cheaper, your deal came in higher. So they were able to work with us because the price tag did come into their favor and caused us more money. So I appreciate Dr. Pierce and the, and the team and all of our staff working, uh, to, to work on that. Next council meeting, you'll be seeing a new development agreement between us and the school district to install over five thousand feet of water line for the new five and sixth grade ed- education center. And I want to say this in advance because it's a very important piece that sometimes, Mr. Mayor, you'll even acknowledge, we do not share what we, what we're always doing to save the taxpayer money or that we don't celebrate it so much. It's hard to celebrate a water line on social media or a sewer line, but the work that we're about to put in front of you is going to save the school well over about one-point-four million dollars on the cost of that school by our crews working with the school district. Now, does our cit-, do our staff or the city get one-point-four million? Absolutely not. But the taxpayers did not pay for the additional one-point-four million. So while the city as its organization did not benefit, our citizens as a community did. And so I'm looking forward to, well, not.
Did that, did that kill you to brag on yourselves a little bit?
It hurt. It hurt. But I learned this yesterday in talking with the PIO from the school. We're like, well, it's kind of hard. It's easy to celebrate a queuing lane when everybody's mad about it, but when you have water line to a new school, what's there to celebrate? I mean, it's like, hey, good job. That's just doing your job, but it saved the taxpayers one point, at least one-point-four million. What, Andrew, what was the first estimate? It was over three point?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars for the historic, I would say that we'd have to two hundred or less.
Yeah, so we still believe at the end of the day, we're usually using, and so again, when we get asked for numbers, like, well, how'd you come up with that number? We will always use the conservative number. The more, higher number is going to be closer to two million, but we're going to take a more conservative number. But the taxpayers should take notice that when we're working with the school, it's never, it, this is different because like, if you haven't been around for years, the, the, the relationship between the school and the, the city wasn't always that great. And so to see us where we're at today and, you know, Dr. Wistrum and just all the folks that have gone before that have worked on these projects, it's like, it's kind of in a place where the partnership is really good today. But to save the citizens that much money is really well. The last thing I want to say, we, I'm sorry, I've got two more things. We're going to have a work session coming up in November to talk about a few issues regarding the charter. We have an April ballot. Obviously, there's a lot going on next April with the elections. So at the same time, we're going to be bringing some charter amendments to the people. We're also going to be asking, talking to the council about, uh, their pleasure when it comes to the recreational marijuana. There's been a number of communities that have, that have taken on a tax initiative regarding that, and if that is the pleasure of this council, or if that is something that we need to take on. But that's going to be a work session that we will be bringing before the council. The last thing I want to point out is I was pulling in today and I saw it, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was last week, we were having some event at our fires, fire department. We had a number of Green County law enforcement officers on our, on our campus. And then today, as I was pulling in tonight, there was a number of, uh, out of our community, I saw clever, maybe Billings, uh, police officers that were at our facility. I mean, I just want to take this moment with all of our city employees and all of our staff, just to thank them for all that you do. When it comes to our public safety, and I see all the training and I see all the people and the work that goes on, I, I, I'm not sure why anybody would want to put on a badge or take on that responsibility with the, the optics that, that go on. But I want to, or the challenges that you face in the field. But I want you to understand it from, from a leader and as an administrator, I appreciate and support the work that you all do every day. And I see the training and I see the work that probably most people just do not get to see. The ride-alongs I get to do with the, with the troll officers and the work, uh, that the major and chief and everyone, Chief Compton, that you all do. I just want to extend my appreciation for the work that you do and thank you because sometimes it's not everything that you see, uh, is the truth. And so I just appreciate the work that you guys have done, uh, to protect and serve us, but to all of our employees, but to all this council that serve, uh, that put your name in for two hundred dollars a month or for four hundred dollars a month. Thank you for your service to the community and thank you for everyone for being here tonight. And so, hi, mom, and have a good night.
Reports from council. We'll start down here and work this way. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thanks to staff and all the hard work that went into this agenda. I didn't look at the cage pound, ca-, page count.
Seven hundred and fifty-two.
I was afraid, but thank you. We're over it. But, uh, thank you for all the hard work that went into that. Uh, I had a lot of questions, so I appreciate all the help in getting my questions answered. Today, I'm driving through town and I see this big, bright, beautiful, red, steaming machine. And, uh, been looking for that thing for a long time, so I'm really appreciative of the crack sealing that I see going on. I know it's not the most glamorous thing in the world and it's not the prettiest. To me, it's pretty. It's pretty in red. But I appreciate all the efforts I'm going through in sealing the cracks, and it does give us a, a chance to talk with the citizens on that effort and, and what, what that does accomplish. Looking forward to this weekend for Pumpkin Days, and so, you know, big thanks to the city, Parks and Rec, uh, the Pumpkin Days Committee and the Kiawanas for always having that to put on for us and the citizens here in Republic. And it's always such a great time. So hopefully I get to see everyone out there at some point in time. Probably won't be out there the whole time, but, uh, I'll be looking for everyone, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Moving on down, any other reports?
As mayor, I get to have the last word, and, um, it's going to be in April. It'll be four years as mayor and two before that as council member. That's six years doing this job. And, um, I've become friends with a lot of people out there and a lot of people up here. And, you know, it's, it's that, that freedom and friendship that allows me to ask my friends to sit in for me whenever I need to go to my kid's football game. And we all joke about it, but everybody in here knows where my heart's at, and that's, that's my priority. But the friendships I form are also close to my heart. And, um, what had to happen tonight with Ms. Poole is tearing my heart apart. And for those of you that went and sat, um, I appreciate your support. No one wanted to do that. And Ms. Poole has been a pillar of our community, and she deserves our respect, and she has mine. So it was very difficult to do what we did tonight, but I wanted to go on the record to say that I do respect the years of service Ms. Poole has pu- put in. And I really wish things had been able to be handled with less pain. But we dealt with it, and that's what we have to do whenever we're in these positions to make hard decisions. You know, Mr. Franklin and I sometimes go back and forth and we, we usually, uh, well, we always walk away friendly.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
But we don't always agree, you know, and, and that's the hard part of making some of these decisions, is that sometimes we just don't agree. And that doesn't mean we can't be respectful and kind about it, and that's why I'm proud to serve up here over the last six years because Republic is a place where we have that courtesy and respect, even if we do disagree. because Republic is a place where we have that courtesy and respect, even if we do disagree. So with that, after a very difficult council meeting, I'd like to.